Okay, it is three o'clock. I will call the meeting to order. Agenda item A, approval of the Order of Agenda. A few changes to the Order of Agenda. Items 1A, B, and C. Broadway Commons Edition plat zone change and planned unit development are continued to February 4th, 2025. There will be no presentation by staff on this item and no action will be taken on this commission today. Reminder, next Tuesday, December 10th, I think Miranda got the last few RSVPs. We have a Brown Bay to kick off the land development code. CZB will be here, so we hope that everybody can attend next week. Excited to kick off that project. Planning Department has hired a new staff member. Chelsea Leaverson has joined the department as a planner from, I believe, MetroCog. So yeah, welcome. And you have a lay down item for, in front of you, so take note of that. And so the Order of Agenda, changes are the continuance of 1 Alpha Bravo Charlie. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Motion and second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Next item, Item B, minutes of the regular meeting of November 5th, 2024. Everybody have a chance to look at the minutes? I'm sure you read every single sentence of it. Any changes, discussion on the minutes?
Move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion is approved. Now we are going to move to... Also, we have Commissioner Shuey on the phone, just so everybody's aware. And we'll go ahead and we'll move to public hearing items. And the first item will be led by Commissioner Rosenberg. I will be recusing myself, so take it away, Vice.
Thank you. The Prairie Farms Third Edition. Call Donald Kress to podium.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good afternoon, Donald Kress from the Department of Planning and Development. As the Vice Chair has stated, our first item here today is Prairie Farms Third Edition. This is located here on 31st Street South. Just east of I-29, City of Frontier is here. This may look familiar to your commissioners. This was before, as noted in your staff report, this was before you in July. The original plan to this was to replat these three lots into a little more buildable configuration. So this one isn't so narrow and clarify some of the, make these a little more buildable, a little more even. That did go through to the City Commission approval. But prior to recordation of that plat, the applicant asked that we not record it. They had a different configuration in mind. Someone wanted to buy two of the lots, so they went there going through the plating process again, starting anew. Since we didn't record the plat, we could use the same name, Prairie Farms Third Edition. Again, pretty similar. These views are in the snow rather than the sun, as they were in July there. But looking along the subject property here, this is on the adjacent property. And then we're looking here on the bottom end here, which would be this part down here, looking this way. And there is this private driveway existing from the prior plat. And again, you see an undeveloped area here. And there will be two residences constructed here. The zoning here is SR4, that will remain unchanged. The plat here, here's Lot 1, here's Lot 2. You may recall, the earlier version, which had three lots, had a driveway access easement running along here. That is not, no longer part of the plat. This lot can take access up here. There's a negative access easement along 31st Street, but we have allowed one break down here for access to this lot. And then both lots can use this existing driveway for access. And the project engineer, Brian Patengale with Houston Engineering, is with us this afternoon and may wish to address the commission. Staff's recommended motion is stated in your staff report and shown on the screen. That concludes staff's presentation on the Prairie Farms Third Edition. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thanks, Donald. Any questions from the commission? Okay. Brian, do you have anything you want to add? Any questions for Mr. Patengale? Okay, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone that has, would like to speak on this? Not, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, which, what would you like to do?
I move to approve with the motion in the staff report.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Miranda, can you call the roll?
Holtz?
Aye.
Hass?
Aye.
Cecil?
Aye.
Shuey?
Aye.
Moes?
Aye.
Gli?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Stoffrin?
Aye.
Rosenberg?
Aye.
Now I'll turn it over to Miranda, the boss. She can take it back.
Thank you, Commissioner Rosenberg.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to hearing item 3 Alpha and Bravo. Graffstrom First Edition.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Graffstrom First Edition is located here on 57th Avenue, or 57th Street and 19th Avenue North, on the edge of the city limits here. This one also might look familiar to you. This one was before your commission on September 5th. In a slightly different configuration, your commission recommended approval during the time, or since that time, the applicant has been working with one of the property owners and wanted to change the internal configuration of the plat a little bit. The exterior boundaries of the plat don't change, but they want to change the internal configuration. And since they did, they do have to go back to the planning commission to get that changed. They can't just arbitrarily add lots. You can take lots away, but you can't add them. So this is a major subdivision and a zone change from ag to limited industrial. And again, two of the properties are going to stay ag, very similar to what we looked at the last time. Here's a view along 19th Avenue North. These are some existing farm buildings that are going to remain there. And then this is looking north from 19th Avenue, along the easterly edge of the property. And the Verna Drive, which is shown on your plat, will be, I believe, right about in here. And then this is, 19th Avenue is way down here. This is 57th Street North, it's not paved at this time. And this is the new 23rd Avenue North, just looking down that corner. This is one of the residences to remain up here, through the trees you can see. And then this is same location, turning around, just looking at the top, the north part of that property. And Mid-America Steel is in the background there for your reference. Zoning again is limited industrial. Well, zoning now is ag, but will be limited industrial and ag. And here's how the plat changed. The, as shown in your staff report, originally this lot here, which is now Lots 13 and 14, was one big lot. But discussions with the property owner there determined that he only wanted to retain this part of the property for his residence. That's the one we saw through the trees a moment ago. And so this lot was added as an industrial, lots owned industrial. The zoning, when we're done, if you approve this project, will look like this. These two lots will be agricultural, and these will all be limited industrial. We also note that this plat adds negative access easements near the entrances to Verna Way to manage access from the arterial streets. The applicants, Hans Graffstrom and Chris Mack, there he is. Chris Mack from Christianson Companies, Hans Graffstrom from Graffstrom Construction, and Mr. Randy Harwood, who is one of the property owners, are with us this afternoon and may wish to address the commission. Again, this is just a minor change from the previous plat, but since they changed the plat configuration, they had to come before you again. Staff's recommendation is stated in the staff report and shown on the screen. That concludes staff's presentation on the Graffstrom First Edition. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Donald. Commissioners, any questions for Donald? No questions? Go ahead and invite the applicant up.
I'm available if you have questions.
Sure. Commissioners, do we have questions for the applicant? No questions? Okay. Let's go ahead and open up public hearing. Anybody in the audience wish to speak on this item? Close public hearing? Commissioners?
Move to approve per staff recommendation.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, go ahead and take the roll. Gli?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Hass?
Aye.
Stoffrin?
Aye.
Moes?
Aye.
Rosenberg?
Aye.
Holtz?
Aye.
Cecil?
Aye.
Shuey?
Aye.
Tassa?
Aye.
Motion carried. Moving to item 4, Morton and Dottie's Edition.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Morton and Dottie's Edition is a request for a conditional use permit related to a telecommunications support structure, what is commonly known as a cell phone tower. Staff will bring to your attention that this recommendation will be for denial, which we rarely have. And we'll talk about this as we go forward here. The proposed location is here in 1417 South University Drive. This building here is, this is not an undeveloped property, it's in a parking lot. But it's actually not an undeveloped property. This property here is Hurley's Religious Goods. And there's a parking lot, there's the close up here, you can see. And it's the 1, 2, 3, third parking spot over, in which the applicant proposes to install this cell tower. So it's right about there. Here are some views from the backside, 13th Avenue, 13 and a half Street South is on the backside. So the red dot is about where the tower would be located. Then across the street here is a commercial business with some residential as well. This is the Hurley's Religious Goods. And the steeple here is Alat Lutheran Church. And then this is standing in approximately the location of the tower, looking north across the street, northwest across the street, and straight west across the street. This is zoned residential, single dwelling residential, but there is a religious institution here. And the zoning here is limited commercial. And that will remain, the conditional use permit does not affect that. The applicant has proposed a tower that's 79 feet high and has proposed a reduction in the setbacks from the surrounding area. So there's required 200-foot setback from the tower to all single-family residential. They're asking for a reduction from the north and the northwest, between about 16 and 19 percent. This is shown in your staff report there. But the reduction to the west would be approximately 45 percent of the required distance. Staff feels that that is too much to ask for and for that reduction. And also, the whole would be a 79-foot tall tower, which is, exceeds the maximum allowable by right height of the LC zone, by 29 feet. The maximum allowable by right height in the LC zone is 50 feet. And it would really dominate the neighborhood. I'm just going to talk briefly about the technical parts. Mr. Blair Ransome of Buell Consulting and Ms. Tamara Hartman of Verizon are here, so they can go into more of the technical parts of this with you. One feature of this tower is that there is no ground equipment. There is no shed at the bottom. So everything's built into the, into the tower. As you see in the findings that are before you in your staff report, our land development code has a definition of stealth tower. From what has been provided by the applicant here, we do not believe that this meets the requirements of a stealth tower, which would also contribute to our recommendation for denial. There are actually three sets of findings in your staff report there. These photo simulations are provided by the applicant. These are in your staff report too, and I'm sure Mr. Ransome will show these again. So this is about what the tower would look like here. This is 13th and a half Street South. Again, Hurley's Religious Goods. Couple of different views there. View straight on there. And from University Drive, so you see current and with the tower there. And this just shows the location of the tower in the third parking stall there. A little more explicit drawing there. It's an eight-foot base, I believe. And again, Mr. Ransome will go into the details of this. A little more technical detail drawing of the plat. This has to do with the coverage. I'm not going to go into that in detail right now. So again, our recommendation for this CUP is for denial, as we feel that the reduction in the setback to the west is excessive and that the tower, the tower is not of a stealth design and will dominate the neighborhood with its, with this height and its size. So that concludes staff's presentation. Blair, again, Blair Ransome of Buell Consulting and Tamara Hartman of Verizon are with us this afternoon and may wish to address the commission. Mr. Ransome has a presentation. And the recommended motion is stated in your staff report and shown on the screen. Thank you, Commissioners. That concludes our presentation of Morton and Dottie's Edition CUP.
Thanks, Donald. Commissioners, any question for Donald?
I have a question. The structure directly to the west, is that an apartment building or single family?
Directly to the west. So...
The one closest to the proposed tower.
Yeah. So this is a church.
Okay.
Yeah. And then this is, this is a neighborhood commercial zone property. Let's go back there, Commissioner, let's recap that for you. This is a neighborhood commercial zone property, but this is a single dwelling zone property, as is this. So the, there's a graphic in your staff report that shows, you know, where 200 feet to here would be, 200 feet to here would be, and 200 feet to here would be. So I think it's about 163 feet, 169 feet, but here it would only be about 110 feet. And we just think that one is too much.
Thank you. I also have a question, sorry. I'm just curious, do you guys have any examples of what a stealth tower looks like? And then have you guys had any in Fargo that we should know about?
I don't, I don't have any pictures, but I can tell you where at least one is. So if you know where, you may remember a couple of months ago doing Southwest Fargo Mission Second Edition on the corner of 45th and 40th. And Living Waters Lutheran Church is there. And out in the yard behind there, there's like a three-sided thing that, that has, I believe, some religious symbolism on it. That's a cell tower, is in that. And then, Mr. Williams, do you know any other offhand ones we have stealth?
I believe there's one in West Fargo, West Gordmans, in the church parking lot there too.
Yeah. So, yeah, we don't, some locations have, have other types of, you know, they disguise them as trees or water towers or whatever. We don't have anything like that here.
You have a question? Go ahead.
If this tower would have been 200 feet away, would staff still have recommended denial because it had gone over the 50-foot by right?
We've talked to the applicant, let me answer the question here this way for you. We've talked to the applicant about locating it in different places, in a more commercial area. That would, that would be one factor in it, but that's a hypothetical. We'd have to see exactly where it would be located, Commissioner.
And then, one other question. Was there any discussions with applicant about doing any sort of screening for that to make that more stealth? I know it's 79 feet tall, it's kind of hard to screen something like that. But I was looking through some of the images here and it looks like across the street, there's some boulevard space that doesn't have any street trees that could potentially provide some of that screening in the future? Is that something that is...
We did not have a direct conversation with the applicant about that, Commissioner. But perhaps that's something that you can discuss with him when he's before you.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Regarding the single-family homes across the street?
Yes, sir.
Were the residents of those homes notified?
Yes, sir, we had, so we did our usual 200-foot, or 300-foot notification. We did get one request for information from someone who actually lived outside of that area. They lived facing this way, they backed up on University Drive. And we're just asking about the nature of it, and we sent some information similar to what's in your packet. And that seemed to satisfy their curiosity. We didn't hear any more from them.
Any other questions? No? Thanks, Donald. Invite the applicant up. Just make sure to state your name for the record.
My name is Blair Ransome, I'm with Buell Consulting. I'm the consultant that works with Verizon, selecting sites, working with the commission, shepherding it through the leasing and the zoning process. So what I would like to address today... Oh, and Tammy. Hi, Tammy Hartman, I'm with Verizon. I'm part of a team called Network Outreach. I'm from the Twin Cities and I just kind of, this is my job, is I come and talk to commissions and city councils about our plans for development in your community. Yeah, so Mr. Kress went through several of the items that you'll see in our presentation. So, let me just get to that. So the couple of things that I'd specifically like to address is the stealthing element, obviously, and the height. And a little bit about how we selected the site. So as you can see, it's located at 1417 University Drive in the Hurley's Religious Goods parking lot. The intent is to offload capacity from several surrounding Verizon sites that I'll show you in a subsequent slide. As sites get overloaded, it's, the efficacy of those sites decreases significantly. And these, so this site, while it's centralized in this area, it in effect will improve coverage in a much wider area because it's offloading those sites. Specifically, the Stanford Hospital is one of the main targets. So the proposed tower, this is a SMACRO design. And it's different than a regular MACRO in that, as Donald mentioned, there's no ground equipment. Everything is contained. And it's, has a very low profile. And when I say profile, I mean the diameter of the tower. So you may see, you know, a standard monopole style has a large protruding mount. The reason we don't do that in these situations is specifically to integrate, integrate it into the community more effectively. We just did one in a Bemidji School, very similar neighborhood. You know, the school and then surrounding single-family homes. Again, only one parking lot is being taken up. We're also attaching a light to it to replace a light that we'd be removing. I just want to add there quickly as well. Verizon does consider that stealth. It is not our typical, as Blair said, that is not our typical design. Our typical design is what you probably see as you're driving along the freeway. So this flush mount is meant to integrate into what we consider your utility corridors. So as we're looking for places to go, and we have all of these factors that we're trying to weigh, you know, we have the needs of our network, the requests of our RF engineers, working with landowners, working with the city, trying to put all these pieces of the puzzle together. We identified a very dense commercial area, right, where we needed to be. And then we saw a utility corridor where you had the power lines with the transmission kind of buckets. They almost look like garbage cans there. So it fit right into where we're hoping to put it. Yeah, and so that, and the definition of the ordinance is stealthing to the greatest extent possible. So there is no specific definition that we can go by. In those situations, it's left to subjective interpretation. Staff does not agree with our interpretation. The options that we can look at, that you might see a giant pine tree, I don't think that that would fit in the neighborhood, certainly. So that's why we select these type of tower designs. I'll move past this. So going into finding the location, there are, it basically starts where the engineers identify areas of of needing to offload capacity or increase in coverage. In this case, it's the former. And then they send someone like me out. I review, I drive around the neighborhood, I review the ordinance, talk to landowners, and recommend sites. So I will move, I'm going to move past this for the moment here. So as you can see, this is the various zoning districts. This is the very small corridor of limited commercial zoning that we looked at. You see the church here, they did not want to lease to us, so that's not feasible. Really, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, they all require the same residential setback. And some of them, particularly 5 and 6, they're much closer to single-family housing. There's also that utility corridor there, so you can't build, you can't put a cell tower there. And then I will move to this. So this is a really important depiction of the surrounding sites that we're looking to offload. So as you can see, if we move too far east, too far west, north, south, we're going to hit, we're going to be too close to another site. That just makes it not worth it. We're going to end up having to come back to you and say, hey, we need another tower, we need another tower. So we want to pick the location to be as optimal as possible, so we're not building, there's not, you know, 10 towers in the neighborhood, there's just that one. And to that end, regarding the height, the 79 feet, which puts the antennas at 60 feet, is the bare minimum. We looked at doing the by right height, and that does not effectively serve the community. So it's really not worth doing a tower at that height. I'd also add to that, Blair, that, that, you know, these towers are kind of like umbrellas. So you know, you pop up your umbrella and it's, it's touching all of these other, what we call offloading. And so we can kind of imagine that all of our towers are joining arms with each other and your call is getting passed. Or maybe, you know, if you're watching your kid on Life 360, it's getting passed from tower to tower. And so that, that, the 79-foot tower allowing our antenna to be at 60 feet is what's going to give us the most capacity for that particular location. Yeah, thank you for that. And so these are the, they're called propagation maps. They show coverage and capacity. So you see here, there's a significant hole that's not being served by these surrounding sites. That hole is filled, you know, to a pretty good extent. If we had a 200-foot tower, it would be much better. But obviously, you know, we endeavor to provide the best service and have it integrate into the neighborhood. One item I'd like to go back to, one of the Commissioners asked about a different location on the lot, I believe. So if you can see my cursor, one location we discussed with planning staff was right up against the Casey's. Let's see, right up against the Casey's building that is still on the Hurley's Religious Goods lot. So he could lease that space to us. The reason we didn't do that is there's overhead electric lines that you can see shown on the site plan here. So we can't really put a tower right in the middle of that. So we have to move it east, have to stay out of the way of the loading dock, which is right here where my cursor is. So that's why we selected that location. And that would be the 45 percent setback reduction. And Tammy, are there any... Yeah, just like, yeah, just a couple more things, I think. You know, we see what you're doing here in Fargo, like, there's a lot of development. Just when we were sitting here watching your new housing developments, and that's just one meeting that we were at. So we see what you're doing, trying to be part of that and supporting your infrastructure. You know, we're trying to help support the members of your community who use our services. But city staff uses our services. You know, you're one of our customers, we appreciate that. Also, your fire department, also your police department. The state of North Dakota is one of our customers. And we have a real need for this. We need this solution for capacity, for coverage, so that we can continue to serve all of our customers, as well as city staff, state staff, the North Dakota Patrol, North Dakota DOT, or all Verizon customers. So that's why we're here asking that, that what we propose is approved by the commission. I don't think I have anything else to add. We'll take your questions though. You know, actually, just one more thing to add about the stealth. The, historically, you know, you've seen the strategy, the term stealth, as in you want to make it look like something else. You want to make it look like a pine tree, a palm tree, et cetera. Nobody really thinks it looks like that. You've all seen them probably. They stick out, they're taller than all the trees surrounding. So what we find to be a much better strategy is to decrease the profile, like I said. Make it as slim as possible. is to decrease the profile, like I said, make it as slim as possible. And rather than disguising it to look like something that everybody knows it's not, just have it as small as possible, as short as possible, in the back lot where nobody's driving by on the boulevard. And we find that that's a much better strategy to integrate into a community.
And that reminds me of one other thing I was going to say about that, Blair, is that, you know, talking about pole height as well, you know, we're permitted at 50 feet, but we're prohibited from having another cell tower within a quarter mile of that 50-foot tower. And so, again, it's kind of pieces of a puzzle. We're trying to figure out, well, if we get this 80-foot tower, and we have our antennas at 60 feet, then we don't need a 50-foot, and then be prohibited from doing another one within a quarter of a mile, and have to come in front of you again and ask for another, you know, variance or conditional use. And so that's why we're here presenting this solution, even though staff doesn't support it. We think it's the perfect solution for really heavily industrial area in a utility corridor. And we're next to Casey's, Hurley's Goods, you know, and it fits in when you're, I just drove it on my way here today, and it's like, this is, it's a utility corridor. It looks, there's utility lines all along it, exactly where we're going to be.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Yeah, I have a question. So there's a good amount of development changes, buildings being torn down, and new buildings being built on the university corridor. I'm wondering if this were approved, and down the road, the owner of that strip were to sell it or redevelop it, how would that impact this design and the function?
Yeah. Well, I mean, he may speak to that as well, but that typically is something that we would negotiate in our lease with the landlord. So the city doesn't typically impact something like that. It's, in the event that there's redevelopment, we figure out how our tower would impact that redevelopment, if it's going from, you know, right now it's limited commercial use, so presumably be another limited commercial use building. And so our tower would most likely be able to stay there. But we normally negotiate that in an agreement that we do with the landowner, if that makes sense.
And I can also just add to that question. The advantage of not putting it, you know, in the front lot is you could do some development like that. You're probably going to have a building setback that is not going to cover that cell tower anyway. So it would still, it would still likely fit in a redevelopment plan. Also, obviously, whatever you're redeveloping it into, commercial, residential, they're going to demand quality service. So it's really a net positive.
Any other questions?
I've got a two-part question, one for you and I, also have one for you, Donald. But this is kind of a follow-up to what I asked Donald earlier about landscape screening, anything like that. I was curious if you had those discussions around this property, or this project in particular. Because when I look at who this impacts the most, it's really the residents to the west of this property. And so I looked on street view to see where the mature trees are that's going to visually screen those residents from this. And really, the most impacted sites are the ones that are, you know, they don't have any street trees or anything like that. And obviously, they're across the street from where you're proposing to put this location. But have you, in previous projects, provided any trees to these residents in the boulevard space? Has that been anything that you've done previously?
Certainly, yeah. We often see that in ordinances. In this case, we didn't, there's not a whole lot of room, so we didn't pursue that. And typically, the landscape screening is for the ground equipment. And since there is no ground equipment, we didn't apply that in this case. But, you know, we're certainly open to discussing design changes in those, kind of minor design changes to make it more palatable.
Commissioner, can I ask you a quick question? Are you talking about the house to the west?
I'm talking about the church at 1401, the single-family house at 1345.
Yes.
And 1413.
Okay. And I see those boulevards are completely empty. And so what we typically do, because I'm sure you got arborists on staff that know what's most appropriate to put in that, is we do some type of, I don't even know how we would pay the city for it, but we'd just pay the city to figure out what trees go in there, if that makes sense. So we give you a budget to tell us which trees you want, and we deliver the trees and make it planted. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and I think that kind of segues into my question for Donald. Is that anything we can even require, since those boulevards are across the street, to maybe, maybe as a commission here, we can discuss if that's something we would want to add to the motion for possibly approvals to add street trees?
Commissioner, I'll say, I have never seen such a condition. Mr. Williams, what do you think on that? We could, we do have a, Forrester, yes, ma'am, we do. He's not here today.
Thank you, sir.
To help clarify, you're talking about putting landscaping in on the west side of that street?
Yeah. So if we look on the screen here, at View 1, where that square is, you know, there's, there are no trees on the south side of the boulevard there, or on the east side of the boulevard, where it says View 2, there's a, there's no tree there. So that, I mean, that could be screening there. And then the house just to the south of that, there's no trees in that boulevard space either. And that, I guess what I'm getting at is that trees could provide that screening for those residents.
I think that's certainly an option, but I think the city would like to be able to meet with the property owners on that, to see what their opinion is on it first. Now, granted, that is public right of way.
Right.
But the adjacent property owners require the maintenance of that property.
I have a question. You mentioned that you had considered moving the tower east to the northeast corner of that lot, but you, but there are overhead power lines there.
Yeah, let me see if you can find. Okay, so you see where my cursor is here? It's just a little, it's hidden for the most part.
Right.
There's a transformer, those lines, and then I believe there's a telephone line, too, that come.
What would it take to underground those lines?
That would be a decision for the power company, probably significant. And it, the reason they probably wouldn't do it is because they may not have an easement in that area for a specific underground. Yeah.
That may be worth pursuing a bit more, because, well, we had the lines at our house underground, and it wasn't that expensive. And so I don't know the situation here, because I haven't looked in detail at that corner of the lot. But if moving your tower away from the, the street to comply with the setback requirements, in my view, might be an option to consider.
Yeah, any, any move, even to that area that I mentioned before, would still require a setback reduction. The reduction would decrease, but it would still not be within the 200 feet.
I think I have a pretty good, I mean, I've got Google Earth app, and I can give you kind of a, there's several lines there, and I'm just not sure which of those lines belong to power, telephone. I don't know if there's fiber.
Do we, if you're going to speak, come up to the mic? I mean, do we know from city what, what those are?
You know, I guess my recommendation from the planning commission, if you're going to get into desires of trying to solve the solution, to maybe make that motion as an item for continuation, you know, I'll just say, we tried to have discussions with the applicant related to possible options, and we, you know, kind of struck out. And so your guidance is certainly welcome and well-received. And if you have solutions you want us to try to work on, maybe make those recommendations, as opposed to try to find a solution here. Because there are easements, and there's things like that.
Absolutely.
There's trees across the street, for instance. You know, there's a lot of details that staff did try to work on.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have one. Can you go back to the map that shows where your other towers are located? And so you can't be within a certain, how many, a quarter-mile of another location? Is that right?
Right. And that's actually in the ordinance. So essentially, if we were to go to the primitive by right height, we would have to come back to you and ask for a variance from that separation requirement, the quarter-mile, to do that. And as you can see, the, you know, the, the area that they essentially gave us to avoid not being too close to a site is really that strip of commercial that we looked at previously. And as you can see, it's, it's densely residential property around that area. There's no real option to go into any of those residential areas.
Okay. So you have the map of, yeah, where other locations, you had mentioned, you know, so that you don't have to put a couple that's the most centrally, but that's just because of the distance from other ones, not, not, you can put two because of that
Yeah, and actually, a helpful side that we kind of skipped over, because Donald looked at it. So you can see within the quarter-mile, the blue, and the half-mile, the yellow line. So it really does shrink your potential locations.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Do you have any more photos that are zoomed out to show how many in Fargo, not just in this vicinity, but the proximity of coverage, maybe in a south Fargo, you know what I mean?
Not with me. We do have, yeah, they could provide maps showing the entire coverage of Fargo.
Sure.
Yeah. We focused on the area that we're trying to serve, obviously, and then giving context from the ones immediately surrounding it.
Okay. Any other questions for applicant?
I would assume that you've had, in dealings with other communities, putting towers in, and they had stealth requirements.
Yes.
How did you handle that?
We, we consider this stealth.
You considered it. Did they consider it?
Absolutely. Yes. We have, as Blair said, we have what this SMACRO design, there's one in Bemidji. I've got a couple in, not close by, but in Eden Prairie. We've got this exact design in the community that requires camouflaging or stealth. Yes.
And you would consider it stealth just because of the location where it's at?
Yes, because.
If you was in a different environment, you would handle it differently, come back with something different in terms of recommendation?
If it was.
Seems like if we start going down the road where we're not, we have a rule, and if we start changing that, just to say whatever the applicant thinks is a stealth tower, rather than what we've got in our requirements, then all of a sudden, it becomes wide open everywhere.
Can you tell me what you consider stealth?
Well, we have the example, and I remember we approved that one.
I think the difficulty with the ordinance is that it doesn't stipulate. It gives some kind of broader examples, but it, it doesn't give a hard and fast direction. So as Tammy was saying, you know, this Bemidji area, very similar neighborhood, it was a school instead of a retail shop. We use the SMACRO design, and it, you know, has blended into the community.
Madam Chair, may I just, something. Commissioners, on page three of seven of your staff report, it says LDC Section 200402 NJ4 defines stealth as, and that is the ordinance definition of stealth. This is what Mr. Rasm is referring to.
And I would also bring to the point of, if it's about staff's interpretation of this, that's a different appeal body and part process as well.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Would the Dwayne's House of Pizza development or Sanford be outside of that quarter-mile from the one by Randy's Diner, south of 94?
I'm not familiar with those specific locations. Is the, is the question whether we can move it to those?
Yeah, because those would seem more appropriate, with Sanford being, you know, eight, 10 stories high, than Dwayne's House of Pizza redevelopment being, I think, five stories high. It seems like integrating it into one of those buildings, which would be, as you said in your presentation, is kind of the focus of the area that you're trying to, to help out with better coverage.
Sure. Are you, are you saying putting antennas directly on the hospital?
Correct.
Yeah, we actually looked at that. That was one of the first things I looked at. Because in areas like this, rooftops can be very helpful for that exact reason. It's just too close to this tower where my cursor's at. Yeah.
Any other questions, commissioners? No? Any other questions for staff, Donald? Okay. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
I will go ahead and open the public hearing. Anybody here wish to speak on this agenda item?
I'm here if you have any questions. I own the property at 1417.
Do you, do you want to speak?
If they have questions, I'll answer questions. Otherwise, I'm good.
Do you have any questions for the property owner of the site, commissioners? No questions. Anybody wish to speak? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissions, what are your wishes?
Well, let me try something that, it seems to me that generally, this location is the best location. That is, here is the widest commercial area away from residential. And it does, I understand the need for the cellphone tower in approximately this location. And the only thing that occurs to me is to potentially continue this case and ask the applicant and, and the staff, thank you, by the way, Ms. Crutchfield, for reminding me that we don't need to solve the problem here, but to ask the applicant and the staff to investigate the possibility of moving the tower to the northeast corner of that lot and address the issue of the power lines.
So.
It would still require a variance, because it's still not totally sufficient distance from the, as I understand it, from the residential. But it would be in the middle of that commercial block, and much less visible, I think, to everybody.
So is your motion to continue?
Yes.
Okay. So we have a motion to continue the item specifically to look at the northeast corner?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion?
I just had a quick question. Does the city have a specified area that would be ideal for them? Obviously, they can only move so far in so many directions with where they're going. Like, was there ever, you guys, where would you like to see this? Like, what was your proposed area? Because I don't think we discussed that. Obviously, we know where they want to be, and where they think they need to be. Where would you guys have this, instead of just?
Commissioners, we don't, because we don't, staff doesn't propose locations. We don't, we don't keep an inventory of ideal locations.
Okay. So we have no idea where we could put this that would be acceptable?
My, my thought on that is, most of this language of cellphone towers has been in the Land Development Code since the conception of the Land Development Code in 1998. And not to sound too governmental, but those are the rules that we have to follow when we go about site plan review. And in addition to that, we are working on rewriting our Land Development Code currently.
Say, Madam Chair, if you wish to continue, could you specify a date?
Absolutely.
Thank you, ma'am.
And I mean, I always, I thought Mark was going to go into this location, but in terms of other, and maybe the applicants can talk with staff about this offline, but if the continuation were to pass. But I think there's other locations about maybe, again, not being a technical engineer, of higher height at a different location, you know, at the site that's on the south, they could go 200 feet and, and broader, you know. And so it's, it's really about the location and what's, you know, in the range of options, are there other options? And looking at those options.
And if we move for denial, they can still come back to you and work with you on location and all that, correct?
That's what I was wondering, too, about this motion. Like, so if we, if it's a continued discussion, then with, how does that work?
If this were denied, they could appeal it to City Commission.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Or they could. Or they could withdraw and reapply, right.
But a continuance, just say, please go back and work at this more and then come back to us.
So do you want to, with the recommendation, if the motion is to continue, can you, do you want to say a specific continuance date?
Let me ask the applicant, how long would it take you to rethink this and come back to us? Is a month sufficient time?
Commissioner, we just want to make sure we understand the ask. So the ask is for us to, because we'll still be in front of you talking about stealth and a setback. And so the ask is just to shift this, if we can get those power lines dropped, that we shift it, is that to the east?
Yes, that was my intent.
Okay.
Timing, this would require input from the power company, which can be, could be a very lengthy process, and potentially, they could just say no. I don't know what sort of legal rights they have there. So they may have an easement that covers that, they may have a prescriptive easement. So it's a tough question to answer, timing-wise. If you would like us to come back in a month, I would just ask that you allow us to extend that if we find that more time is needed. And we can provide you reasoning for the extension, obviously.
And we can continue it again, correct?
Can I ask a question on that again, though? Like, if we, so, but if we deny this motion, and it goes to commission and is denied, they could still come back again with exactly what they're talking about as another application, correct?
Different application type.
My-
Different application.
Yep, okay.
Just a different name, right? The one earlier wasn't recorded, so it had the same name, right?
Sure, yes, okay, got it.
Is staff able to clarify, are we able to make changes to our application, our design, if we appeal it? My understanding is we would be appealing this decision, this application, so you, is that correct? So we can't come back with a different location if we appeal to the board, is my understanding?
So let me just see if I can simplify this, and Mark can be my, so I think in front of you are a couple of options, continuation or denial. And if you were to, I think the applicant could appeal either one of those, those votes, continuation or denial. Normally, to Commissioner Glaia's point, if a month is too short of time, we would work with them to continue to another date. In terms of appealing, say you motion, make the motion to deny it, and it goes through at the planning commission as a denial, the applicant could appeal, but it basically starts a new hearing and a new process. We would not, we typically shy away from any change to that application. If you're changing the application, more than likely, the City Commission would send you back to Planning Commission for re-review.
And that was my understanding as well.
Right.
Okay, so we have a motion to continue with a date?
The next meeting.
Okay, January Planning Commission?
It's January 7th, ma'am.
January 7th, thank you, Donald. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion to continue.
I would just like to add that at the next meeting, well, when we discuss this, I think it would be beneficial to come with, if the applicant could come with more images of case studies from around the region. You mentioned that school in Bemidji. It'd be great to see how that looks finished, and then maybe even having a discussion about landscape screening, if that's something that you'd like to pursue as well.
So one thing I'd just like to point out, I know the applicant made a comment about increased property values in the neighborhood for having a cell phone tower. I have never heard of any buyer ever looking at cell phone data when buying a house, but I can assure you that the residents that are going to have clear sight of this tower, that will impact their values. And I think it's our job as this commission to look out for those people. So I just wanted to make that point. And as far as landscape screening, if they do put in boulevard trees, they're just going to be little eight to 10-foot trees, and it's going to take 15, 20 years before it creates any kind of screening. And so I just wanted to make those comments.
Any other discussion? Oh, go ahead, Commissioner Shuey.
Madam Chairman, yeah, this is Brett Shuey. And coincidentally, I lost both wifi and cell service during part of the conversation. So no better timing from Murphy's Law to kick in. But I think for the, I do support the extension here, and would also be curious to understand what the layout would look like for perhaps two by right towers, so that we understand that comparative as well versus one mono tower.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue to January 7th Planning Commission. No more discussion, let's go ahead and take the roll. Schmidt?
Aye.
Holtz?
Aye.
Cecil?
Aye.
Stauffer?
Aye.
Moes?
Aye.
Rosenberg?
Aye.
Glaia?
Aye.
Shuey?
Aye.
Pass?
Aye.
Toss it? No, so motion approved to continue to January 7th.
And that's to talk about that specifically?
Thank you, commissioners, we'll continue to work with the applicant.
Thank you, Donald. I just want to make sure, commissioners, we're almost at an hour. Are we okay to continue rolling? Or we're at the next agenda item? Do you want to break, or we? Let's roll. Okay, go ahead, we are on hearing item number five, the District at Fargo Fifth Edition.
Thank you, commissioners. Luke Marmen with Planning Department, presenting item five, which is the District of Fargo Fifth Edition. This is located at 3788 55th Avenue South. If you follow my cursor on the screen, I'll point out some context of 52nd Avenue South, 38th Street South, and 55th Avenue South, and Walmart to the northeast of the subject property. The applicant is requesting a zone change to repeal and reestablish a CO conditional overlay on Lot 1, Block 1, the District of Fargo Fifth Edition. Subject property is being rezoned from LC Limited Commercial with a CO conditional overlay to LC with a revised CO to modify the prohibited signage, prohibited signage types. The base zoning is unchanged. Looking at the site photos, on the top, we are facing south along 55th Avenue South. And then on the bottom, we are facing northeast along 38th Street South. And you can see the sign in discussion here on the screen. It's currently developed with an existing monument sign, as you can see in the northwest corner. In this past July, this monument sign was applied for, and during the review, staff found the proposed electronic messaging center, or EMC portion, is prohibited by the CO because animated sign is listed under the prohibited signage section. The applicant revised their plans to exclude the EMC and got their permit, as you can see on the screen. With the zone change to revise the CO, the applicant will be allowed to add an EMC onto the existing sign. Looking at the conditional overlay revisions themselves, to give some background, the original CO for the District of Fargo Edition in 2007 had several design standards at the request of the developer, which exceeds today's standard CO regulations. The existing CO had some of those standards carried through with the most recent plat of the subject property, which again is the Fifth Edition. The LDC's previous sign code from 1989 was reappealed and reestablished in 2010 with subsequent text amendments. Removing the animated sign from the prohibited signage listed in the CO will let the LDC sign code regulate the electronic messaging center. Staff has included an amendment related to the proposed or prohibited uses to reflect the land development code text amendment since the latest CO ordinance, which is shown on top for prohibited uses. And you can see the prohibited signage is redacting the animated sign from both the commercial development section and the residential development section. Staff has received no inquiries in regards to the project. We find that all criteria are met, and are recommending approval, as noted in the staff report and shown on the screen. The applicant and representative Nick Qualley and Nathan Scaff are present to answer any questions. And that concludes staff's presentation, thank you.
Thank you, Luke. Commissioners, any questions for Luke?
Just so I'm clear, the current sign code would allow an animated sign were it not for the conditional overlay?
Correct. And it's just two different terminology of animated sign and electronic messaging center, which are talking about the same thing.
Any other questions? Okay, go ahead and invite the applicant. Do you have anything? Do you have any questions for the applicant, commissioners? Okay. All right, go ahead and open public hearing. Anybody wish to speak on this item? Anybody wish to speak? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, commissioners?
I've got a comment on here. So I guess when I read through the conditional overlay and where the sign code is today, allowing the animated signs, I actually find that the conditional overlay is more appropriate than what's allowed by right under the sign code. And reason being is that animated signs, at least from what I've read and how I feel, are intentional to catch people's attention, catch drivers' attention, which in turn distracts drivers, gets their eyes off of the road. This stretch of 38th Street here has the Fargo Sports Center newly completed to the south of it, as well as a pretty high-density area of multifamily to the east. So one could probably reasonably assume that there'll be an increase in pedestrians around this area. And also looking at 38th Streets in particular, there are no signalized intersections until 52nd Avenue South. And then I don't believe there's another signalized intersection even down to 64th Avenue. So that's 12 blocks of, if you're trying to cross that 38th Street, you're kind of doing so at your own risk, where you don't have any protected crossings. So that particular intersection, 55th Avenue and 38th Street, there are two lanes in either direction, plus a left-turn lane if you're coming south on 38th. If you're coming south on 38th, trying to turn into this property, you have the potential of being distracted by an animated sign at that shop, while there could be someone crossing the road right in front of you with that increased pedestrian activity. So I guess with that being said, I am actually in support of denying this application due to not complying with the Fargo Transportation Plan that was recently approved by our commission, in City Commission, which has an emphasis on safety for all users of our streets, including pedestrians. So those are my comments. I'm prepared to make a motion for denial.
So we have a motion for denial. Specifically, what criteria is not satisfied? You were prepared for that question?
Move to deny due to not aligning with the goals of safety with the Fargo Transportation Plan, which would be criteria four-
Criteria four.
On staff's report.
Okay. We have a motion denied, do I have a second?
I will second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Commissioners, what are your discussion on the motion?
I got a question. You know, we've had certain uncertain intersections, and I always think of 13th Avenue and University. And there was one right there, and it wasn't, it's one thing to have an animated sign, another one, having one that's so bright and irritating that it's really difficult for the neighborhood. So, and when we're looking at something like this, is there any, what are we really going to see? Is it going to be something that's just going to be so bright and obnoxious that it's going to cause a lot of attention and more trouble? Or is it, what do you envision? What does the applicant envision here?
Can I bring the, I can bring the, okay. Just state your name for the record.
I'm Nick Qualley with Scenic Sign.
Nathan Scaff with River Rock Property, I'm the property owner. Yeah, in regards to your question, what you're going to see, the property is called Shops at Tillstone, and so it's a retail and office complex, as you can see. And typically, this isn't going to be some crazy, bright, attention-getting, distracting thing, but what we do want to do is be able to advertise and show, there's a lot of offices in the space. We have a restaurant going in on the ground level, there's a chiropractor. The River Rock Property offices are there as well. So it's just be able to put other signage up there, to be able to advertise more for those businesses, rather than just their names on a tenant panel. It's been a very big deal to the tenants that I'm leasing to in that building, to be able to make sure that they have, you know, that exposure, as it's just a little off 52nd Avenue. They want to make sure that they're advertising properly there.
So is this going to include off-premises advertising?
No, this is just on-premises advertising. But it's, you know, just under 35,000 square feet in the building. There's a lot of different offices and different businesses that are in there, so.
So where on the current sign would this light board go? And what would be the size of it?
Luke, do you have any of the exhibits?
I don't, I don't have the graphics, but you know, the dimensions, I mean, I can kind of point it out with the cursor where.
I do have one copy or two copies that I could-
And would it be something similar to like what's at Shops at Osgood or the corner of 42nd and 40th, those, that office building there?
Similar, it'd be a vertical sign, if you want to speak to that.
I'm not sure what Shops at Osgood one is. Trying to think of another good example, East 32 Strip Mall on 32nd Avenue, it'd be very identical to that, it's just a vertical display. Oh.
Oh. Oh, there we go.
Such technology.
Okay.
Thank you.
And there also wouldn't be any animation. I think in the current signage guidelines, you know, there's stipulations where it has to hold for a certain duration of time, I think seven seconds. So it would just, you know, advertise for a business, a picture, and then switch to another advertisement. So it wouldn't be any animation, any moving. They're able to just put different advertisements for the businesses.
Okay. Thank you very-
I had one more question, maybe not for you guys, maybe Luke?
Thank you.
You can help me out. So if they were, if they hadn't built this property and already gotten their permits and stuff, they would be allowed to put the sign up by right? Right now, is that what I'm understanding? Because we're repealing and then putting a new conditional overlay, is that?
Yeah, so the sign is existing, because it is allowed by right in and of itself, but just the-
But if they were building that today, they would be by right to have had this electronic sign, is that correct?
No, there's an, the existing conditional overlay allows the sign, but just not the electronic messaging portion, or the animated portion. Is that answered?
If I buy a property just south of there and I'm building something similar, that would be allowed by right?
Right, if it had, if it did not have this exact-
If it wasn't already built, the property directly across the street would be allowed to have this sign?
Correct.
Probably not, because most of these properties, when we rezon them, they have conditional- those conditional overlays into base zoning districts.
So it's a case-by-case basis then? Thank you.
Are there requirements as to like when it has to be shut down? Like, does it turn off at night or anything? No?
No, the sign code does regulate the brightness, though.
Okay. Any other discussion or questions, commissioners? So we have a motion and a second to deny the recommendation.
Can I just add that I would be in support of approving the planning department's approval based on, you know, like they said, it's basically a sign with no animation, nothing. It's basically a sign holds for seven seconds, and then it goes to another sign, and so it's, I don't think it's going to distract too much or anything more than most signage, and so I'd be in favor of approval.
If that's a motion, I'd second that.
Okay, so we already have a motion on the table, and we have a second, so we have to take roll, and then if it doesn't pass, we can do another motion, correct? Okay, just making sure. Okay, so if any other discussion, we'll go ahead and take the roll. And just to clarify, this is the roll on the motion to deny. Correct. Thank you very much. Rosenberg?
No.
Pass? No. Moes?
No.
Shuey?
No.
Cecil?
No.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Holtz?
Aye.
Stoffrin?
No.
Gli?
No.
Tossa? No. So, motion fails. Yes, there you go. Motion fails, so now I'll take another motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve based on findings and recommendations by the staff.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on this motion?
I'll just say I appreciate Tommy's concern for distracting drivers, but what has influenced my thinking on this is it's not animated, that to change the message every seven seconds or whatever their interval is, I do not think would be unduly distracting for drivers.
Any other discussion? Okay, take the roll on the motion to accept findings of staff. Rosenberg?
Aye.
Pass?
Aye.
Moes?
Aye.
Shuey?
Aye.
Cecil?
Aye.
Schmidt?
No.
Holtz?
No.
Stoffrin?
Aye.
Gli?
Aye.
Tossa?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item, thank you very much, Luke. Next item is hearing on Avery Commons Edition, Donald Kress.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Avery Commons Edition is a minor subdivision, another recombination of lots here, located in the Cottagewood subdivision, 42nd Street South, 52nd Avenue South here, 38th Street South. These lots were planted in 2013, have never been developed. There are five lots here on Avery Lane South. There are five empty lots here. Avery Lane, as you saw, curves around here, so there's just a couple of shots from Friday afternoon of that area. These residences here are on the adjacent lots, they're not part of this subdivision. Zone SR4, single-dwelling residential, that is not going to be changed by this proposed subdivision. Subdivision very simply takes the five existing lots and replats them into four slightly larger lots. The lot dimensions are specified on a chart in your staff report. The applicant, Brian Patengale of Houston Engineering, is with us this afternoon and may wish to address the commission. Pretty straightforward subdivision here, commissioners. Staff's recommendation is stated in the staff report and shown on the screen. That concludes our presentation on Avery Commons Edition.
Thank you, Donald. Any commissioners, any questions for Donald? No questions? Do you have anything? Commissioners, we got questions for the applicant? No questions for the applicant, you're off the hook. Go ahead and open up public hearing. Anybody wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioners?
Move to approve with the motion in the staff report.
Second.
And motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, go ahead and take the roll. Cecil?
Aye.
Rosenberg?
Aye.
Moes?
Aye.
Holtz?
No. Aye, sorry.
Shuey?
Aye.
Gli?
Aye.
Pass?
Aye.
Stoffrin?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Tossa?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item number seven, we are moving on to Eagle Valley Fifth Edition.
Thank you, ma'am. So Eagle Valley Fifth Edition is located here at 74, 75, 24th Street South. This is 25th Street South and 76th Avenue. This is a zone change. The property is currently zoned LC Limited Commercial with a conditional overlay. The proposed rezone is to SR5 Single-Dwelling Residential, which has a density, that's our densest single-dwelling residential zone with a density of 14.5 dwelling units per acre. It is currently a large open field, again here. This is 25th Street and 76th Avenue. Looking northeast of the property here, this is 24th Street, existing residences here. Now, we're on 24th Street and 74th. This is the north side of the subject property here, and then this is, this over here on the edge is 25th Street, so just looking back southeast across the subject property there. Because of negative, existing negative access easements on the plat, the only access to this property is from 24th. You can't come off 52nd or 25th onto this property. Again, the zoning there is LC Limited Commercial. As you see, this is on the edge of our city limits, somewhere to the property on the graphs from Adresian, that's on the other edge of the city limits. And the proposed change is to SR5. The applicant has provided a general layout here. Again, as noted in your staff report, this is not, you are not approving this layout. If you would approve the zone change, this is a conceptual plan that shows the 44 units there, which is within the density allowed for this property. It's 3.4 acres, so that fits within the density at 14.5 dwelling units per acre, with a couple to spare there. Staff's recommendation is stated in your staff report and shown on the screen. Mr. John Eunice of Eagle Ridge Development is the applicant. He's with us this afternoon and may wish to address the commission and further talk about his plan for this property. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, Donald. Commissioners, any questions for Donald?
With this being located on the intersection of two, what could potentially be two major roads, is it considered a commercial node in future growth plan, or?
Well, actually, when you look at the growth plan here, talk about that here. So that is identified on the new growth plan, this is in your staff report here, as suburban neighborhood. So that among the uses identified in this plan are townhomes duplexes, triplexes, and quadruplexes. So the applicant proposes attached residences there for that.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Donald? No? Do you have anything? Go ahead and introduce yourself.
Yeah, Commissioners, John Eunice with Eagle Ridge. You kind of stole my thunder. The updated growth plan showed attached single-family here, and that's the plan. We feel that it blends in really well with the existing neighborhood and still adds some level of control in terms of boulevard maintenance by having a single townhome lot.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay. Let's go ahead and open up public hearing. Anybody wish to speak on this item? Anybody wish to speak? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioners?
Motion to approve based on staff recommendation.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? No discussion? Go ahead and take the roll. Moes?
Aye.
Shuey?
Aye.
Pass?
Aye.
Rosenberg?
Aye.
Cecil?
Aye.
Gli?
Aye.
Stoffrin?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Holtz?
Aye.
Tossa?
Aye.
Motion passes. And Donald, one more.
Yes, ma'am.
Osgood Townsite Fifteenth Edition.
Yes, ma'am. So just wanted to note one thing. It's stated in your motion there for the last item, but that also does repeal the existing conditional overlay. So there was no conditional overlay on the SR5. Osgood Townsite Fifteenth Edition is another Eagle Ridge Development project here, located on 52nd Avenue South and 47th Street. It is an undeveloped lot as part of Osgood Townsite Fifteenth Edition. Again, undeveloped here. This is 47th, and then this is, this is a private drive that goes around here. This is not a city street that loops here. This is an easement shared by the adjacent property owners. Just looking southeasterly across the property, that's 50 cars in the back around here around 52nd Avenue. Then here, we're looking along the north side. Here's some of the adjacent property owners here, Castleton Veterinary Services, among The zoning here is LC Limited Commercial. The applicant, Eagle Ridge Development, proposes a conditional use permit to allow household living in the LC Limited Commercial Zone, which would allow them to develop a mixed-use project here. Again, Mr. Eunice can describe that project in more detail to you. This is a conceptual layout. Again, this is not being approved with the CUP, but it's a conceptual layout of how this building may look. And again, the applicant can talk in more detail about it. We did get a call from one of the adjacent, one of the adjacent property owners yesterday. They did not actually send any comments today, at least prior to the hearing, but they did have some comments about the development here and what had gone on in the, in terms of maintaining the road and parking in this area. Any new development, of course, would have to meet our parking requirements on site. The conditional use permit, and just to point out to commissioners, the conditional use permit, all it does is allow residential use of the specified density on this property. It does not modify any of the parking requirements. It does not modify any of the standards, development standards of the LC district. And so that's, it's just for the residential. This being a multi-story building, it would be between, just looking back at these pictures here, it would be between these properties and 52nd, so they wouldn't have a direct view on 52nd. But again, we're just looking at a residential, or a CUP to allow residential use here. The one condition here is the maximum dwelling would be, or dwelling, the maximum density would be 32 dwelling units per acre, a little more dense than our usual MR3, which is 24 dwelling units per acre, but this will accommodate the number of proposed units on this lot. John Eunice from Eagle Ridge Development is still with us here for this item, and may wish to address the commission and talk about his project a little more. That concludes staff's presentation. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, Donald. Commissioners, any question for Donald?
Is there any reason for the maximum number of density or dwelling units?
Yes, sir. Traditionally, we, when we do these CUPs for residential, we specify a density. In this case, we looked at what's reasonably going to fit on there and what had been proposed. We worked this out with the applicant. And so I believe they proposed, is it 91 units, Mr. Eunice, to fit on that property? And so we rounded up, you know, so if it's 31.75, or, you know, we give them 32, just in case. But yeah, this is something we worked out with the applicant, and if we believe that this is an area that would support the increased density, being the location that it does, we believe that that would be appropriate for here.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Okay, hold on, invite the applicant up. Patiently waiting this whole agenda.
Yeah, Commissioners, John Eunice again with Eagle Ridge Development. Appreciate Donald's work on this. Yeah, we are looking, to add a little context, we own the retail building immediately to the east of this property. We also own the multifamily complex that's immediately to the northeast of this property. So this ends up kind of being that final piece of our development in this area. We are looking at a four-story, four-over-one podium with underground parking, so we're structuring parking, so that aligns with that bonus density that you typically get in MR3 zoning when you structure parking underneath your building. We are looking at a retail bay on that corner, the southeast corner of the building, and a highly amenitized, the balance of the building would be a highly amenitized multifamily building. I'm open for any questions you might have.
Any questions? No questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anybody wish to speak on this item? Seeing no movement, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners?
Make a motion to accept the findings and recommendations in the staff report.
You have a motion?
Second.
Leave a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, go ahead and take the roll. Stoffrin?
Aye.
Holtz?
Aye.
Cecil?
Aye.
Shuey?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Rosenberg?
Aye.
Gli?
Aye.
Moes?
Aye.
Both?
Aye. Sorry.
Pass?
Aye.
Tossa?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And commissioners, it is our practice to read the following statement for CUPs. The planning commission is the final decision-maker for conditional use permits. Any appeal of the planning commission's decision goes to the city commission pursuant to Land Development Code Section 200903B. Appeals of final decisions must be filed within 10 days of the date of decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Donald. Or should I say dasher dancer?
Donner, actually, yes.
He said his presenters, and he listed all the reindeer, and all of them were, so he's. One other item, we, Commissioner Holtz is leaving us. She's like, what? I just want to say thank you very much. You were appointed August 13, 2018, so we definitely thank you for your service to the city of Fargo. You've attended a lot of neighborhood meetings, participated in development of our growth plan, core neighborhood plan, and specifically, you've asked a lot of questions about neighborhoods and always been cognizant of them. We just very, very much thank you, and we will miss you and wish you the best.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to serve the residents of North Fargo, but also the city of Fargo. It's been an honor, and yeah, I look forward to hopefully joining community events and planning in my future home of Minneapolis.
Congratulations. So yeah, so this is her last meeting. We wish you all the best. Again, thank you. And then we will have a new commissioner, Michael Betluck, for our meeting January 7. So welcome, a new commissioner. And we, based on conversation today, we might have some case, use cases for Land Development Code. Reminder on next Tuesday, December 10, CZB will be here. Welcome again, Chelsea. And hope everybody has a very merry Christmas, and we will call this meeting adjourned.